Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, 4:00 PM. Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Cheshire?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Tucker?
Present.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Any items to be added to the agenda? If none, we'll move into item four, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, second by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we cast our vote.
You go through. Mr. Scares?
I didn't hit the same, sorry.
Are we good?
For the citizens' convenience, all work sessions and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube located as the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Please remember that the board work session is designed for internal board and county staff communications, discussions, and work. It is not a question and answering session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained respectfully. Any outburst or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in official person removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties designated by the board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearings of the citizen's sections of the night's business meeting. Presentation, item 5A, Zito Presentation, Mr. Dave Arnold. Welcome. How are you, Mr. Arnold?
Hey, good afternoon, gentlemen. Just wanted to introduce our guest, Mr. Jim Regis, who's co-president of Zito Media, and he's here to provide an update on Zito Media. It's one of the county's internet and cable TV service providers. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Regis.
Welcome, Mr. Regis. How are you doing?
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, and thank you, everyone, for taking some time for our update today. I'll just start by saying a few words about our goals here in Pennsylvania County. First, we want to create a stable broadband network. That's kind of the basis for everything we want to do with our business, and that's really the first priority. Secondly, over that broadband network, we want to offer high-quality internet video and voice products. So obviously, if you have a broadband network, you can run a number of applications over that network, and the three that we really are focused on are internet, video, and voice products. Third, we are in the process of working on transitioning our video product from a kind of old broadcast format to a state-of-the-art streaming platform. And that actual customers will start to see that in the next 30 to 60 days, and I'll talk more about that transition later in the presentation. Fourth, we want to maintain a local office presence, and there've been some obstacles with that with COVID and some staffing issues and so forth, but over the last close to a year, we've been relatively stable there. And again, expect to continue that for the long term. Next, we need to have a strong local technical staff who adhere to industry-standard maintenance practices, and we continue to work at that. Obviously, for most service industries, the last couple of years have been challenging in terms of attracting people and holding on to people, and we're no exception to that. But clearly, our goal is to have a strong local technical staff. Third, and last, in terms of our call center and customer service, a trained staff with adequate staffing to answer the phones in a timely way and respond to customer inquiries in a timely way. So those are our goals. Some of the challenges that we face are, we acquired the business here, the network, about a year and a half ago, and just essentially, the business is composed of hundreds of miles of network, and identifying, you know, that network has been outside in the elements for years, and kind of identifying problems and resolving those problems is a challenge. We are working on that, and I'll talk more about some of the progress we're making, but clearly, hundreds of miles of plant and maintaining it is a challenge. As I said, staffing during COVID has been a challenge, both for the office, actually, all three, for the office locally here, for our call center, which we staff centrally, and for the local technicians. Staffing has been challenging, and we continue to work at that with varying degrees of success, but can talk more about that later in the presentation. Third, in acquiring the business here, we've had to focus on kind of mindset and procedures of local staff, and basically, there are a set of kind of industry-standard maintenance procedures and practices, and we have been, you know, working at trying to make sure we implement those here, and it has taken a while to get that done. I'll just comment that, you know, when there is a problem in the system, typically, there's some physical problem out there, and you can kind of go out and solve the underlying problem, or you can maybe tweak something in your head end or hub location or in an amplifier and kind of overcome the problem, but not really solve the underlying problem. And we are really focused on trying to make sure we're solving the underlying problems and not just tweaking things, which will fix them temporarily, but in the long run, not really resolve the issue. So that has been a challenge of ours, and we continue to work at that, and I think are making some progress. Speaking of progress today, I wanted to mention a few things that we've done. First, we've purchased and implemented a more sophisticated program of signal leakage detection. Basically, signal leakage, it's a piece of equipment that you take around the system, and you identify where there are leaks in the system. So where there's loose connections, cracks in the cable, anything that can cause a leak in the system can cause system impairments and affect service, and we have implemented a more effective program of doing that. Secondly, we've implemented a preventative network monitoring system. This is a, and this is a system that basically takes data from all the cable modems out there and collects that into a database and essentially uses an intelligence to kind of pinpoint where your network issues might be. So basically, by implementing that, we're able to more quickly identify where problems are, hopefully identify problems before they actually become service- affecting and so forth. And that has actually just been implemented in the last 60 days, and so I think that the full benefits of that have not been realized, but I think we are starting to realize some of those. Because of some of the staffing problems I mentioned, we have hired a full-time contractor who is working 60 hours a week to help on a number of the maintenance issues. That's been in place about three to four months here, and I think is starting to generate some benefit from a service standpoint. Next, we added 30% to our call center staffing, so we had a significant increase in staffing, and having the extra staffing has also enabled us to do more training in our call center, so more training concerning troubleshooting and troubleshooting steps and so on and so forth, and I think that is having an impact as well. Finally, and it's something I mentioned in the letter a couple of months ago, we have a complete system upgrade planned. The initial phase of the equipment has been ordered, the circuits have been ordered, and I'll go into more detail on that later in the presentation. Okay, I wanted to just look at some of the data, and I'll first say that we feel like we still have a long way to go, but I wanted to look at some of the data to see, you know, are we making some progress over the last year or so? And basically, this set of slides will just show three data points, one from February of '22, one from August of '22, and one from February of '23. So if you look at completed maintenance jobs, February of '22, there were 57. By August of '22, that had dropped to 34, and by February of this year, we were down to 31, so it had continued to edge down a bit. Obviously, we want to continue to manage that curve down, but we feel that we are, you know, making some progress in the number of maintenances that are coming up on a day-to-day basis.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, sir?
Sure.
When you say completed maintenance jobs, that's, what does that entail?
Okay, so we kind of divide our work into installs and service, which is kind of from the tap, which is just outside of the house, to the house, work at that level, and then maintenance jobs that kind of go from the tap back through our network. So maintenance jobs will tend to affect, you know, more than a single customer. It might affect 10 customers, it might affect 200 customers, but it's kind of our distribution network as a whole, whereas service work is more at an individual house.
Okay, so I guess if you had a line problem, that would be considered a maintenance job, not a service call?
Yes.
Or a modem, let's say you had a modem problem or a switch problem, that would be considered a job, not a service call? Correct?
So if you had a modem problem, where the actual problem with the modem itself, that would be a service call? Because that's done just at the individual house, whereas a problem with an amplifier, or a power supply, or a crack in a mainline cable, that would be a maintenance job and would affect multiple customers.
So that's not included as a service call?
Right, so the last slide that I looked at was maintenance jobs. This next slide is service calls. So if you look at service calls, in February of '22, we completed 291 service calls. In August, that number actually went up, not unusual in a cable system in the summer for service calls to go up, given the warmer temperatures caused more loss in coaxial cable, and also thunderstorms obviously create issues for the system as well. So not unusual for things to tick up in the summer, but if you look year over year, we went from 291 service calls in February of '22 to, I can't read that number, 167 in February of '23. So again, we feel like, you know, some progress on that level. Still, that is a higher number than we would like to see. We would actually like it to be about half of that number, but we are, it does seem like it is starting to be managed down, and we expect to continue to manage that down in the future. Okay, the next number is really just the number of phone calls that we take from Pennsylvania County. Again, it's kind of a crude measure, but obviously, more phone calls typically means more problems. Fewer phone calls typically means, you know, a more stable, smooth system. So in February of 2022, we took a little over 2,000 phone calls. By August of that year, it was down to a little over 1,600, and by February of this year, we took just over 1,000 phone calls from Pennsylvania County. So again, a number that is still a bit higher than we would like to see it, but it is coming down over time. The next slide just shows a little bit of our overall call center performance. And the first, on the left-hand side, you have average speed of answer. So in February of '22, on average, we answered the phone in 58 seconds. That obviously doesn't mean there aren't phone calls that wait longer than 58 seconds, but on average, it was 58 seconds. The summer was, again, things tend to get busier for cable operators in the summer from a number of aspects, and we were having some issues with staffing. The average speed of answer went up to 198 seconds in the summer. During the summer, we made some decisions, as I mentioned in my summary comments, to significantly increase staffing, and that number in February was an average speed of answer of 29 seconds. So we've made a pretty significant amount of progress on that side as well. Again, that's an average. There are still phone calls that can wait significantly longer than that. Typically, our hold times during the day, nine to five, are lower, and as our staffing gets a little lighter in the night, the hold times get a bit longer. Okay, on the right-hand side is what we call service level, which is the percentage of phone calls that are answered within 30 seconds. In February of '22, that was 63%. In August, that was 29%, and in February of '23, that was 74%. So again, a similar pattern we see there. Okay, the last thing, set of things that I wanted to cover were the system upgrade. We, after having about a year and a half of experience here, feel like a system upgrade is definitely needed, and I wanted to walk through the details of that and then talk a little bit about the schedule. The first thing we are going to do is replace all of the fiber optic nodes in the system with what are recalled, what are called remote phi nodes, CMTS nodes. So let me try to explain that. The CMTS in a cable system is what actually talks to the cable modems. And currently, there is one CMTS in the system, which is in our major hub, and the signals emanate from there and go out over fiber to a neighborhood, and then it's converted to RF, and then it's distributed to the homes. There is a new technology which allows you to separate the kind of the brains of the CMTS from the actual physical interface. And so what we're able to do is drive that physical interface right out into the neighborhood, so the signals are actually emanating from there, and that means the signals are perfect at that point in the system. So obviously, once signals leave their point of emanation, whether it's from our hub or from the neighborhood, as it goes through the system, and it goes through amplifiers, and it goes through passive electronics, and it goes through cable, there's only kind of loss and distortion and noise that gets added. So the closer you can point, you can push that point of emanation to the home, the better. And so this will be a significant enhancement to the signal quality, and, you know, will be reflected throughout the system. It also allows that link to the neighborhood to be a 10-gigabit Ethernet link, so it's a pure digital signal. There will be no distortions on that part of the link, and it will be much easier for us to monitor the link that goes from our main hub to the neighborhood. So all of those things will be advantages to that part of the upgrade. The next thing we're doing is an upgrade to the return path of the network. If you go back and look at the history of cable television, what were cable television networks originally, they were a broadcast system, and what was really important is how much bandwidth you pushed downstream in the system. The upstream originally was relatively irrelevant, and so therefore, the amount of bandwidth that was allocated to the upstream was relatively small. With the advent of internet and the increase of importance of internet, obviously, that upstream has become more important, and so we are modifying the system here to add upstream bandwidth, so that the upstream speeds of the internet can be much, much faster. So I think the maximum speed now is about 25 megabits per second. We expect with the new system, we'll be able to implement speeds of 300 to 400 megabits per second, something in that type of range. We already offer a gigabit per second in the downstream. We think that's adequate, but we are focused on increasing our upstream speeds. In addition to increasing speeds, that will increase capacity, so that, you know, any bottlenecks in the upstream direction should be minimized and eliminated. And also, the spectrum that we're adding is actually much cleaner spectrum than the upstream spectrum that was originally in cable systems. So cable systems, the upstream was generally done in the 20 megahertz to 40 megahertz bandwidth. That bandwidth is subject to things like CB interference, impulse noise from the home, a lot of noise things that as you get up higher in the spectrum, you're just not as affected by. So in addition to adding more spectrum, it is a cleaner spectrum that we'll be adding. Finally, by adding that spectrum, we'll be able to take advantage of some of the more recent modulation techniques. Every version of DOCSIS, which is the cable modem spec, has come with advancements in kind of modulation techniques, and the extra bandwidth in the upstream will allow us to implement what's called OFDM, which allows more capacity and more robust signals. Okay, with the upgrade, and this is something we've actually had ordered about a year ago and have just had a hard time getting our vendor to deliver, which is improved circuit connections from Pennsylvania County back to our national backbone, which has a hub in Atlanta. So we, our national backbone, excuse me, our national backbone goes through the major carrier hotel in Atlanta, and all of the services on our backbone are available there and so forth. So basically, this circuit introduction will create two circuits that go diversely to Atlanta, so two different directions. So if one side is cut or has an equipment problem, the other side should still stay up. So it's redundant, and it's diverse, and should be a significant improvement. From the standpoint of our services, the important part is that it connects to our national backbone. So that means it gives us access to our peering connections, to major content providers, people like Google and Microsoft Network and Netflix and, you know, Amazon, and essentially, all of the major content providers we peer with directly at those points of presence. So that rather than going through an internet connection, you're essentially going over our network directly to those providers. It also gives you access to all of our services, and the main one that's worth talking about here is our streaming video product, which I mentioned earlier, and I will talk about next. Okay, the broadcast video that's in place now is really a technology that is a little over 30 years old now. Digital technology in the cable industry, digital broadcast technology became available in about 1990, and that's when you started to have standard definition digital television, and then later came a high-definition digital television over broadcast networks. Obviously, in the last 10 years, video is moving to more of a streaming type of platform, and that is the platform that we're going to be transitioning the system to. It has a number of advantages, including a lot more features. So things like network-based DVR, things like replay TV. So network-based DVR means that you don't have to have a DVR in your So network-based DVR means that you don't have to have a DVR in your house. You basically just tell our network to store this programming, and it will store it for you, and you can access it so you don't have to have a big VCR box on your set. Replay TV, basically, we store the last three days of video programming on our network in our cloud, and so if you want to watch anything that's been on the last three days, you didn't have to say record it or anything. You just have to go back in the guide and say, I want to watch, you know, if it's Sunday morning and you want to watch Saturday Night Live, you just go back and say, I want to watch Saturday Night Live, and it will replay it for you. It also comes along with, you know, pause, fast-forward, rewind, you know, all of those type of features come along with it as well. I guess the final, actually, a couple more things I would say about it. It is a more open platform. It works on any Roku device. It works on any Fire TV device. So if you have a Roku TV, it'll just work directly on that. You won't need a box. If you have a Fire TV television, same thing. If you have an Android TV, same thing. If you want to stream your cable subscription on your phone or on your tablet, you can do that and so forth. So a number of advantages to the new technology. The final thing I would say, and this goes back a little bit to some of the things I was talking about earlier. So that streaming service is originated by us on a national basis, and it's maintained centrally. I know that we've had an issue here with, you know, periodic channel outages and, you know, with having the same technical staff that's working on a lot of the, you know, kind of network problems in the field, having to kind of deal with some of those channel outages, it has been difficult. So one of the advantages of the streaming video product is that it's maintained by us on a national basis, and, you know, individual channel outages will be much less and much more quickly addressed. Actually, I would say this about, I want to make sure I make my, say my caveat. So this is a new technology, and it is a change for customers. And we have found, after being in the cable television business for a very long time, that anytime you change video services, that's disruptive for some customers, and some customers aren't going to like it. And so it is going to take a while to transition people. We think the features, I mean, as I said, there's no doubt technologically where we're going is a much better solution, but it is different. It is a change, and it is going to take an adjustment, and, you know, we will do our best to kind of transition people and work with them as we work through this. Okay, my last slide is to talk about the schedule. First, the circuit conversion. As I said, we have ordered this circuit, I think it's about a year ago now, and we have been waiting and waiting and waiting. I think when I sent you my letter a few months ago, I said it should be done in the next 30 days, which is what our vendor told us. They ran into some issues, didn't get it done in 30 days. We ended up about a week and a half ago sending them a letter that said, you know, we need to move on to a different provider if you can't do this. And actually, within a day of that, we actually got a firm committed date of April 3rd. So we expect April 3rd that the new circuits will be in place, and that will position us to do the other parts of the upgrade, which, but the circuit conversion was kind of a necessary precursor to doing the rest of what we're doing. The node conversion should begin immediately after that, so I would expect within a week or two after that, we'll be starting to convert some of the nodes to the remote physical CMTS nodes, and then the amplifier return path upgrades will proceed after that. We would expect that the entire upgrade should be completed by the end of this calendar Can I answer any questions?
Yes, sir, I have a couple. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You went through, and it was nice to see that you have some improvements in service calls, maintenance calls, and the call center numbers. But are, you know, when I look at those numbers, I got to ask the question, are your, is your consumer base up or down since the day of acquisition?
Our consumer base is down, it's actually, the last two or three months, it's been pretty flat, but the first 15 months, it's down about 5%.
So that would account for some of the decline in the service, maintenance, and calls?
It would certainly, for the number-
If 5% is gone, they're not going to call and complain.
Yeah, right, the number of calls, probably the maintenance wouldn't be impacted because that's the overall plant, not customer-driven.
One of the other things is, you know, you talked about being a national company and all the good things about Zito, and I'm looking forward to seeing those in the future, but it just seems like the preparation for the actual takeover wasn't done as well as could have been, or you probably wished it had been. But I know that the prior owners, even though they were, for lack of a better word, a mom-and-pop shop, they provided what was very acceptable service to their customers, and I know this is a change, but I, for one, board member, got a lot of calls about this, and it was about a variety of things you covered today, from things that would have been service-related to maintenance-related to time-on-call centers, and we all know you had to deal with COVID and all that, but, you know, just, I guess, my statement from, from my perspective of the constituents that I represent, the Chatham Blair's district, I just feel like they deserve better service and performance in the future out of Zito and any other provider that is providing them services. We, you know, we want to hold everybody that's operating in Pennsylvania County to a higher standard, so I hope this is a good signs that you're moving the company and the desires to do that in a better direction, because what we've seen to this point, honestly, really wouldn't be acceptable to me as a consumer. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate you being here and giving that presentation. A lot of it I understood, some of it I didn't. But reaching out to us with these concerns, you've reached out to the board. Have you reached out to your consumers about these upgrades, or have you?
We have not yet communicated with the subscriber base as to, you know, the details of the upgrade, I guess. Happy to, to do that with either a letter or a, you know, that's, I think, a good idea to communicate that, and we're happy to do that.
I would, and I would also maybe, you know, when we, when you do it, make it more of a, and I'm not saying this, you know, wrong, but on more of a layman's terms, the technical stuff is cool, I'm not going to lie, but the average Joe may not, you know, they don't care if you're getting a digital or an analog system, or if you're getting, you know, whatever the case may be. As far as technicians, how hard are you having a problem staffing, and what percent of staffing do you have as far as your online techs?
Yeah, we currently have a maintenance position open and a service position open, and we have, we've used a number of different, you know, industry recruiting sources. We've used LinkedIn, we've used a recruiter to try to find people, and, you know, we have had limited success, I guess. We still, I mean, I would, I would say that we are, I mean, I'm extremely confident that we can solve the technology issues. The workforce issues are more intractable, and we have been, you know, working as hard as we can to recruit, trying in different sources, but I can't tell you, sitting, talking to you here today, I can't tell you that we have solved the problem of recruiting.
Right, and I understand that we're, I've got positions, I've had eight months to a year still open, trying to find technicians. Last question, as far as your inventory of anything, you know, once you get this online, are you having a problem getting the equipment, and do you see that as a problem down the road as for inventory?
You know, we actually have not had a lot of, I mean, you know, we've at times had to kind of scramble around to find some things and so forth, but we have not found internally that our equipment has been a problem. We have, you know, planned ahead and kind of pre-ordered fiber optics and modems and, you know, kind of equipment that we know we're going to need, but that has not, you know, I can't say that that's been a big problem for us.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rivas, I want to thank you for coming, and we've met before, and you're fully aware that Zito, which used to be Chat Moss, is well within the heart of my district. So I'm going to be as kind and as polite as I could be, but I'm going to have to express my concerns, coupled with a ton of calls and in-person complaints from my constituents. And I made a list of things that I'd like for you to consider. First and foremost, apologize to the people that you've let down, because I've heard for well over a year that it was Chat Moss. It was their fault. It was inadequate equipment, maybe so, but you knew what you were buying. And so with, you know, I do want you to succeed. I want Zito to prosper. Most importantly, I want our citizens to get what they paid for. So part of that is truly admitting to failures, not excuses. You had a pretty impressive slide presentation, and I truly hope that all of that comes true. You might consider giving customers credit or even refunds. Many, many, including myself, went for hours, if not days, if not weeks, without service. I never called and asked for any money back, but I know a lot of people did, and they never got it. And when I finally had enough, my bill went up to $105 right at peak time of when I was without Internet. And of course, with this position, as well as, at the time, the three businesses that I run, very often, I'd have to pack up, leave my home, go to my office in Danville to take care of business because I did not have the Internet. And when I finally made the decision to depart from Zito Media, it was in November, and I'd have to look at my notes, but the day after, I was greeted with two work trucks and three employees as they climbed the pole right next to my house to cut me off. And I thought, man, you know, all I simply did was ask to be disconnected. I thought that was to the extreme. So I wondered about my constituents that was waiting for that service technician to come, because I knew you only had three, and they were at my house that morning cutting my cable at the top of that telephone pole. And trust me, I had no interest of climbing and reconnecting. What I've seen is lack of investment. Right after you guys took over, I noticed a few trucks with Pennsylvania tags, and I thought, well, great, they're going to upgrade the system, and that didn't happen. And right before I disconnected service, I talked to one of your supervisors, his name was James, and he said, we'll be there on Saturday, I'll bring two people, and we're going to fix your problem. One installer came, and he told me, nobody else is coming, and I don't know what to do. So that was, as you put, just a lie. So I do want you to look at what you've set out to accomplish and provide the service that you've promised people, that you would provide for them, and part of that is simply keeping your promise. You know, most folks have to work from home, and we often use COVID as an excuse, but quite frankly, we're past that, and people just want good service at a good price. Talking about customer service, the last time I spoke to somebody at your customer service office, I asked them, I said, how many times have I called and complained about lack of service? And the lady said 46. I got tired of calling, and so I can only assume that many people called, and they were put on hold, and eventually just hung up. So I would dare say that you probably had more people than what your statistics said. But anyway, in closing, you knew that we were probably going to beat up on you some, but I do appreciate you coming, and I do hope that you can do what you said that you would do, that you would improve the service, and do realize with River Street, Starlink, and now Amazon looking at an Internet service, it's going to be very competitive. So if you plan on staying here, do what you can while you can. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rivas, thank you for being here this evening, and again, I don't want to sound redundant, and we don't want it to seem like a beat-up session. I don't have a lot of people that are being serviced by your company. However, I'm sitting here looking at your data and what have you, and just kind of running some numbers here real quick. Your phone calls are down 50%. You know, as a business owner or CEO, one of the questions I would ask myself, what about the silent majority? If people are being frustrated for a lack of or subpar service, how many people have stopped calling completely and that you're actually never going to hear from? And in your presentation, you said that you had not reached out to the customers. Just my, my suggestion would be to, to talk to the actual customers that are supposed to be receiving the service and get their feedback. That can be easily done through survey, that sort of thing, but I appreciate the presentation and everything you presented to us this evening, and to Mr. Cheshire's point, you know, I didn't quite understand all of the jargon and the language there, yet still, when you speak with the customers or survey your customers, you know, it's kind of simplified so they understand it, and maybe they'll be able to provide you with some feedback that will better enable you to do what you need to do on your end to get some of those issues straightened out in these other districts. But thank you again for being here, just food for thought.
Any more questions? Mr. Rivas, thank you for your time. Appreciate the update.
Okay, thank you all for your time and for your comments, and I guess I would just close by saying our goal is really the same as yours, which is to provide good, stable broadband service to customers. That's the only way we can have a good business here in Pennsylvania County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item 5B, we've got the rural rustic program. Mr. Crowder, welcome, sir.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Jay.
Well, it's that time of year again for us to start looking at our secondary six-year plan and our unpaid road allocations. I guess I'll just start right off with the bad news. Over the next six years-
I like it.
-we're going to be getting $254,000 less than what we received the previous six years. That's what's been allocated to us. On top of that, the extraordinary inflation rates now have made it necessary to go in and redo the estimates on all the roads that were already on the six-year plan, because the inflation now is not like it was when we made the plan six years ago, when we put some of those roads on the plan. So the price tag went up for the roads that were already on the plan, and we're getting less money. less money. Our goal was to keep the plan whole so we didn't have to pull anything off of the plan that had already been promised, and we're able to do that. So if you've got the spreadsheet in your packet that shows the list of roads on the plan, we took the money available, reshuffled everything, and basically everything stayed the same until you get out to fiscal year 2029 or calendar year 2028. Jasmine Road, under the 2027 road, Jasmine Road was intended to be completed in 2027. What we did was, since that is such a long road, it's 3.9 miles long, we divided it into two separate jobs. So we'll still do the first part of Jasmine Road in 2027, which will get past most of the houses coming off of Yorkshire Drive, and then we'll finish it up in 2028. And then we'll have enough money left over to where we can add approximately 8/10 of a mile to what we already had. It actually says .6 on there, but since I made this spreadsheet, it's actually .8. So not a lot to work with. The road highlighted in blue there, that Johnson Mill Road, that's just one that's come up in the past, and that's why I added it on there as my recommendation. There's several houses on that road. The 8/10 of a mile would not come anywhere close to paving the entire section of the road that's gravel, but it would get the paved section past all of the homes on the road. But that's just a recommendation. If the board wishes to replace that with another road or other roads that add up to approximately 8/10 of a mile, we can do that.
Any questions for Mr. Crowder?
Jay, with the money allocated minus what you reported, $254,000 less, you going to be able to go how far with that money?
Yeah, the list here with all the roads on it, we should be able to.
With the existing money, you can cover all these?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good answer.
It's just we just won't be able to add as much as we have added in previous years. Last year, when I stood up here, we added almost four miles of roads, and this year we can only add less than a mile.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Crowder.
So Jay, the next meeting, we need to have a public hearing and a resolution?
Right. Yeah, if we can get that on the agenda for next month to go ahead and have the public hearing, that would be great.
Appreciate everything you do, Jay. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it. Moving to item 5C, summer internship program. Ms. Vanderheide.
I wanted to introduce to you Jessie Vernon. She's going to be making our presentation today about the summer internship program. This will be our third year, and it has been very successful, as I'm sure she will go over. And I will be here to answer any questions as far as the budget piece of that request this afternoon. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessie.
How are you doing?
Thank you. Good. How are you? Good afternoon. As can mention, I'm Jessie Vernon. I'm a resident of the Blair's Chatham District, and I work at the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research as the Empower Program Coordinator. So as Vanderheide mentioned, this would be the third year for the Pennsylvania County Internship Program among a large framework of programs that we offer in partnership with the Pennsylvania County Schools. So this is our Empower Framework, and this is really how we envision supporting the talent pipeline. Mr. Cheshire mentioned meeting technicians for, right, our local employers and where are we finding employees. This is hopefully going to answer that problem for us. So you'll see three different sort of buckets of activities: career awareness, career exposure and engagement, career experience. And the hope is that when we combine all of these activities along with building student skills, credentialing, maybe that includes post-secondary education, maybe it doesn't, that that leads them to gainful employment. So all of these are activities that we work to kind of spearhead and organize through the Institute, but can't happen without regional collaboration and support from our local communities, local governments being one of our largest employers in the region, and other employers to connect students to careers. So from this framework, some of the activities that the county's involvement has supported, and with this next, hopefully, round of support, would be the Career Choice Youth Expo. That's the large youth expo that has been held at the Ag Complex here in Chatham since 2014. We see roughly 4,000 middle and high school students at that event from the surrounding areas. I think that's later in the presentation, but I think it's just over 2,000 or so Pennsylvania County students specifically at that event. Major Clarity is the platform where all of the internship positions are posted. That also provides opportunities for students to explore different career fields through that platform. We host a mock interview day with students in Pennsylvania County, Danville, and some of the other localities to our east. We host the Teacher Extership Program. Last year, we had eight teachers from Pennsylvania County participate in that program where teachers job shadow with local employers to learn the skills that are needed for those positions, and then they take that back to the classroom. We hosted sector focus camps in the area. And then we support the internship program that we hopefully all know and love at this point. And all of these experiences really are to build student skill sets, build their interests, get them connected to a local employer that they hopefully develop a relationship with, and then go to work for. So as I mentioned, the Institute helps to organize and sort of spearhead the programs that were in that framework, but that doesn't happen without regional collaboration. So our partners for the internship, the Empower Program this summer, would be the Virginia Career Works West Piedmont Group, Pennsylvania County Schools, and Pathfinder's Resources, which is a new partner for the Pennsylvania County Program, but we actually used it in the Danville City Program last year, and I'll mention that as we move forward. So last year, we had 86 Pennsylvania County juniors and seniors that participated in the Aspire Mock Interview Day event at the Institute. This year's is coming up on April 7th. There's still time to sign up if you want to be a mock interviewer or just attend the lunch. We'd love to have you. Ms. Dalton has over 100 students signed up this year. We provided internships to 27 students last year. We worked with eight county offices, three county school departments, one state agency, and six private employers for those opportunities. And then we had the eight educators I mentioned participate in the Excite Teacher Extership Program. Our goals this summer are really to keep the metrics and the number of participants the same for those programs, but to sort of improve upon some of the successes we've had in years past. So this year would be our first year to have employers actually in the Major Clarity Platform managing their application process and their interviews with students directly. Pathfinder's Resources served as mentors for the students' boot camp and Friday debriefs in the Danville Program, and we had great success there in really providing students with some very individualized and specialized support. And so we'd like to have them included on this year's project here in the county. And then we'd like to combine the meet and greet events for the Danville and the Pennsylvania County Programs to just further have those students network and meet, the employers meet, and have those be joint events since those programs are running nearly simultaneously. So the opportunities through this program are Aspire Mock Interview Day, the Summer Internship Program, the Excite Teacher Extership Program, Sector Focus Camps, and that youth expo that I mentioned. So the Board of Supervisors and the county's support through the ask that we've put in for this year would support Pennsylvania County students' participation in all of these programs. The timeline, we're working with employers now to make sure we have all of those internship host sites confirmed. April would be when those go live for students. Students would apply to those in April, conduct interviews late April, first week in May, and then we'd make all of those offers and confirmations in May, along with hosting that meet and greet, and students hit the ground running in June. So the boot camp this year would be June 6th through 8th. They would start their internship on June 12th, and that would run through the end of July, July 28th. We'd like to give the students a week before they head back to school this year. And then simultaneously over the summer, the summers are very busy, the Teacher Extership Program, those Sector Focus Camps that I mentioned, and the, sorry, I lost my place, Teacher Exterships and the Sector Focus Camps are happening at the same time as those internships. And then in the fall, we host that Career Choice Event. In terms of the numbers this year, so we've put in the budget in both funding from the county as well as matching funds that we have through a grant through Go Virginia, 28 internship positions, hoping for 100 students at that mock interview day here April 7th, 15 students to participate in a local government sector focus camp, which is kind of a current, I'd say, gap, right? Students don't have opportunity through CTE programming through the school necessary to learn about opportunities in local government. So we'd like to provide a summer experience for them to do so. 350 students roughly are impacted by that Excite Program. So the math there is, and I'd say it's probably low, middle and high school educators and counselors are eligible to participate in Excite. So kind of the math we've done is, okay, a teacher will go back and share their experience with 50 of their students. And so that's the 350 that we have there. And then all middle and high schools in the county choose one middle school grade level and one high school grade level to attend the Career Choice Youth Expo. So that number is roughly 1,260 students from the county that attend that career exposure event, which several of the county departments came out to this past fall to show students some of the opportunities in the county government. The 2023 budget, total program budget is just under $200,000. That includes $118,250 in leveraged and in-kind support through the partners that I mentioned earlier. And then the request in this year's proposal is $76,765 from the county, which is just over last year's ask, I think last year, it came to like 75,000 or so. So we tried to keep it as close as possible. Myself, the rest of the group at the Institute, and all the partners really do want to thank you all for your continued support of this program. We hope to be able to offer it again, anything that you all can do, even outside of the funding, if you're interested in hosting interns to hopefully fill some open positions that you might currently have in your places of employment, or just coming out when we have Aspire, or when we have some of the events. I know the students really enjoy meeting you and getting to thank you for the, you know, support that you provide them, and we appreciate your support over the last two years and hopefully a third. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions for Ms. Vernon? All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for your time. Moving on to item 6, Staff Committee.
You do not currently have funding in this year's budget for the $76,765, but I have identified $76,765 that you can take from your contingency fund, which will still leave you a pretty healthy balance in there. So that's what I would recommend, and you all will have to make that motion because that's your fund, and I can't just move money. And so I will need that as a motion tonight and maybe bring that up at Matters from Work Session if you all are in agreement with that, supporting this program. And just so you know, so we don't have this every year where we're trying to get them to ask for funding, and really, they're already starting to market that, we have put that as an item in FY '24's budget so that there is a placeholder. And we would love for Jessie to come back and give us updates and numbers of students and that kind of thing, but then we will have to scramble where we're going to get the money from, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we allocate $76,765 from the current contingency fund in order to cover this very worthwhile program for the young folks of Pennsylvania County, and I'd like to see this added to our consent agenda for our business meeting.
I'm second.
You got a second? Any discussion on the motion? If not, we ready to cast our vote. All right, passes you now. Thank you. All right, now moving to item 6, Staff Committee and Constitutional Office Reports. Matters from the committees. Ms. Vanderheide again.
I'm so thankful that you all were here earlier for the Finance Committee meeting. Just for the general public that may be watching this afternoon's work session, the three items that we discussed were to move some capital priorities from the FY '24 budget to FY '23 and fund those. That will be on your consent agenda tonight. We did a brief update of our FY '24 budget, and just very high level right now, we do not have a proposed budget to present at this time. And then the last thing is to go over the resolution that you all will pass to set our rates and fees for the upcoming FY '24 budget year, and that too will appear on your consent agenda this afternoon.
Any questions for Ms. Vanderheide? No, we're good. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I have the second half of the committees.
Yes, sir.
Earlier this month, we had a legislative committee, and the legislative committee unanimously recommended that the board at their April meeting take up two matters. One is the Temporary Camping Amendment. That's included in your package, and that would require a public hearing at the April Business Meeting. The second thing is to revise the BOS bylaws to allow or to create a situation to be consistent where the board representative on the Planning Commission would not have a vote and just serve as a liaison, similar to what occurs on the DSS Board and the FRC Board. So those two items, if it's okay with everybody, we will just have those advertised and/or placed on the April agenda for your vote and decision-making process.
That's fine. Any questions?
I'm fine with that. Derek, thank you.
Moving to item 7, Business Meeting Discussion Items. Mr. Hunt.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, moving on to item 8, Closed Session. Will you read us into closed session, Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir. We have two closed-session items this afternoon. The first one is legal authority, Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A3, "Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body." Subject matters, potential real property acquisitions for public purposes, jail land, 29 land, and hurt properties land. Purpose, review, discussion regarding the same. And the second closed-session item is an economic development update, discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A5. Subject matters, unannounced prospective businesses slash industries. Purpose, general economic development projects, update discussion on the same. So I'll just need a vote to go into closed session under those two matters.
All right, please. I get a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right, you got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? If not, we ready to cast our vote, gentlemen. If not, we ready to cast our vote, gentlemen.
I'm already done.
We good? Thank you. You're welcome.
On the microphone.
I won't tell you what. No end to that.
Mr. Chairman, I will now, um. We enter open session again at six forty-nine P. M. I will now certify closed session if that's okay.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Hunt.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors work session on March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The board hereby certifies by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorized the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any board member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure, the statement shall be recorded in the board's minutes. I will now take a roll call vote. Mr. Cheshire.
Yeah.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Dalton.
Yes.
The meeting, closed session, is hereby certified, and now, Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate to adjourn the work.